Good evening, welcome to the September 6th meeting of the Newmarket Town Council. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Councilor Burns is absent this evening, excused absence. And, uh, we begin with public forum, and seeing no one in the audience, we end the public forum at seven over one. And, uh, we start with considering acceptance of the August sixteenth.
I'll make a motion to seal the non-public minutes.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Nick Thompson. Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Okay, uh, back to, uh, considering acceptance of the August sixteenth meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections or changes? I had. Hello? Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Uh, I have a motion to accept the August sixteenth non-public meetings.
Second.
Any changes? Please call the roll. Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
On my unwritten report this evening, I did want to let the council know that we have received a notice from the Rockhamm Superior Court that the state of New Hampshire is asking for a declaration of summary judgment against the town for the case of us, the town versus the state DOT with the bike paths. Uh, we're working with, uh, the town attorney to come up with our response, but I just wanted to let you know that case is moving forward. It was, came in after my report was finished last week, so I was, wasn't able to put that in there. All right, just to let the council know, we finished the fiscal year two thousand seventeen and, uh, would like to report the following. Please note that these are unaudited figures and may change slightly. For expenses, we finished fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred seven dollars under budget with three percent. For the general fund, we've finished, uh, two hundred forty-three thousand or thirty, and thirty-two dollars under budget. The main factor of this was because of healthcare by forty-two thousand, five hundred seventy-two. This is due to the retirement of two longtime employees and there was a vacancy in those positions, um, uh, for a period of time. This also impacted, of course, the police and recreation, uh, salary budgets, uh, as we saw savings there as well. We also saw savings in heating oil of sixteen thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars. That was just because of the change in the prices. Uh, I can tell you that we locked in this year's oil prices last week before the refineries closed. I need to say that morning when I heard they were closing, I said, "Those were signed, incentive and correct." So we have locked in, um, which is a lower price than even this year. Also, that welfare was down by fifteen thousand, six hundred and six dollars as well. Revenues actually came in higher. I knew we were concerned in late spring, um, but it came in five hundred eight thousand, nine hundred twelve dollars, a higher in the general fund. Uh, motor vehicles, the last, and I had talked to town clerk tax collector, and it is exactly what we thought, that the last two months, people came running in and registering new and somewhat expensive vehicles. And we were two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred sixty-two dollars higher than we anticipated, uh, in our revenue budget. Uh, in addition, building permits were nineteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars higher, and cable franchise fees were forty-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars higher. So we did, uh, very well that year. And to roll into the next one, budget season is upon us. I wanted to provide the schedule of meetings and deadlines for the town council. The town, the county, the department heads will be presenting the budget to me, uh, by the fifteenth. Actually, that got bumped back one week. Uh, then, uh, by Sunday, October fifteenth, by charter, I must present to the town council my budget. And the, on the Saturday, October twenty-eighth, will be the first town council workshop. Usually, we begin then at nine, we finish around two-thirty, three o'clock. And then Wednesday, November eighth, would be the second town council workshop. That is your regular meeting. If need be, there is some other days in between there the council could meet, uh, that's on an off night. But also, the eighth would be the night that you approve it, because the town council must present its budget to the, uh, Municipal Budget Committee by November fifteenth. Uh, so if there's any issues in the schedule, please let me know, and we'll try to work around that.
Can I just ask a quick question about the schedule?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, Sunday, October fifteenth.
I'll get it to you Friday.
Is that, so do you, when you say present it to the town council, you just mean that it will be in our boxes, basically?
The charter states, "I have to give it to you on October fifteenth."
Okay.
Doesn't say what day of the week it is, so.
Right, but I, but I mean, it won't be at our, there's not a separate meeting?
No, no, I, what I'll probably do is at the first, the following meeting, I'll give my presentation during my report, and then we'll roll, roll it into the workshop sessions. Uh, New Hampshire RSA's two twenty-eight, ninety-nine, and RSA two forty require that the state of New Hampshire Department of Transportation propose a plan for improvements to state transportation system every two years. This is called the ten-year plan, and is develop and implement a plan allowing New Hampshire to fully participate in federally supported transportation improvement projects, as well as to outline projects and programs funding with state transportation dollars. The governor has a governor's advisory commission on intermodal transportation called GACIT, which is made up of five executive counselors and the commissioner of the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. Executive Council Prescott has requested to host a meeting of the commission in New Market on October twelfth, uh, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM. The commission will be meeting here in the town hall auditorium. It is a pretty big meeting, um, a lot of people attend. Just want to let everybody know, this is a good chance to see what the plans are for the next ten years for state transportation projects and to comment on anything that, uh, we may want. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair. Okay, I'm going to rephrase that, I want to add one thing. Um, on my ongoing projects, I did a report that the Public Works was securing the striping for downtown. Um, what happened was, we've been trying, pushing the contractor to have the, the striping company, because it's not just paint, it's a thermal plastic that actually goes down for the crosswalks and the si- symbols. And they kept delaying, they kept delaying it. It was the Public Works Director, myself, and, um, the planner said, "It's, it's too late, it's getting, it's getting dark, we need to make sure the crosswalks and everything is, uh, especially kids back in school are well delineated." So we did it on our own. Our attorney has indicated to the contractor that, coincidentally, of course, the day after, we get an email from the contractor that, "Oh, they're coming in Friday." We said, "Don't bother, we'll just take that money ourselves and pay back." It was short money, uh, even if for some reason we can't get reimbursed, we can find it in our operating budget, but I just wanted to know that we did it on our own. Um, it had to be done, and was, I was, we just couldn't wait around any longer.
Yeah.
And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Um, question. Any questions or comments on the, uh, report of the town administrator? Counselor Bowden?
Uh, do we have an update or any type of project management schedule for the phone system?
Yes, because of the, we had a delay, um, it was supposed to be end of August, we should be having it within the next two weeks, everything should be installed.
Couple, um, on the MRI efficiency study, is that, have we had report outs from most of the major ones on that? Where do we kind of stand on that?
We have had all major departments come in and report out. Finance was the last one. The remaining departments would be my, myself, I think planning had two items, that would be the last one, really.
Okay. And, so, is it, uh, is there, is it still under work, or is there going to be sort of a final version of that spreadsheet?
You're gonna, yep, and that's actually what we're working on now, uh, as part of the, the annual review of, of department heads. Some of those goals were rolled into their goals, so we'll be, um, coming up with a final plan of attack and seeing, seeing where they are and what they can and cannot do, or not be able to. But my feeling is, it's a living document, I want it, I'm trying, having them update it monthly anyways, so, and I apologize, it wasn't in the last month's report, so we'll get that going again.
That's okay, it, whatever, it'd be nice, I think it'd be a nice thing to review as we go into the budget sessions, to look at it before that. And, uh, I guess, seeing no other comments on the administrator's report, could we, do we have any committee reports?
Uh, CIP? So, see, that was last, three weeks ago, it was Wednesday.
Monday, was, wasn't it Monday?
Was it Monday?
Yeah.
Anyway, it was last week, sorry about that. Wait, I got the minutes right, hold on a second. Trying to do this fast, but I don't know if you can tell. Um, the twenty-ninth, whatever day that was. All right, so the, the committee elected Roseanne, how do you say the last name?
Quox.
I'm trying to get that right, uh, as chair, and Russ Simon as vice chair. Um, there was an amendment to the rules of procedure to, um, and that was approved to have the facilities director as an ex officio member, although there was a clarification on that, that the planner was following up with the town administrator on after the meeting, so I think there might be some more discussion around that, based on the...
Yeah, I haven't looked at the minutes, but didn't, wasn't the vote, actually, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but wasn't the vote, actually, that they said as ex officio members, they would have the facilities director, the finance director, town administrator, school superintendent, and the, and director of planning?
But, it, I can answer it, because I clarified it with the, to the chair. Department heads should not be serving as ex officio members of committees, we're staffed to the committees. Ex officio does not mean non-voting member, it means by virtue of office, they're a member of the committee. Um, for example, the counselor is by virtue of office a member of the planning board. Uh, so there was that confusion there. We, I didn't think it was in the best interest to have staff being on a committee as a voting member.
I would agree.
We shouldn't do that. We'll provide assistance to the committee whenever they need be, but we don't believe that should be a, a staff person on there. And we, that was one of the things that was changed in the last charter, because we did have staff members on it, and we didn't believe that was correct.
Right. I think the only confusion at the, at the CIP meeting was that they didn't understand that ex officio were voting. The, 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 the understanding of the committee when it voted was that they were not, and, you know, I don't think it was, and it was, and I think, so, back to you.
So, I think we'll get more clarity on that probably in the next, next meeting, or fix, fix that, that wording, based on the town administrator's, uh, clarification on it. Um, upcoming is, uh, the, the CIP submissions, or the request submissions from the department heads, the town department heads. So as part of that, the, uh, the committee members are going to go on tours of the departments. Um, there was some discussion around that, I think, the agreement was that those were valuable, so, um, those are scheduled. And then the department heads will be presenting on the eighteenth to the committee, and, um, and then finally, um, I think there'll be a recommendation scheduled for the twenty-fifth of September. So that's all, this is going to be a busy month, this month. Lots of tours, and meetings, so, um, I think that would be the highlights.
I, I, I think that's right, I think it was the, 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 the school part of it, on the fourteenth is the presentation instead of a tour, because they, they decided it wasn't going to make sense to do a, a tour since the facilities were all, if you're looking into the future, the facilities were all going to change, so, um...
I have a committee report also.
What's that?
Sorry, if you, if you, I have a committee report also.
Go ahead, please, go ahead.
So the budget committee met last Monday, and it was a very quick meeting, we just got the year-end, um, reports from the town administrator and the school superintendent. Um, as everyone knows, we'll be heading into our busy season with the budget committee in the next couple of months, so, um, that's all I have to report.
Um, and the, uh, the dam committee met on the twenty-third, so that was also after the last town council. Uh, and the, um, uh, the main, uh, you know, they were, they were clarification of dates, and, uh, I think that we spent probably as, well, I would say the two things that came out of that, and I'm going from memory, the thing that we found out was that we could, when it comes to the spillway on the dam, there was some clarification of question about making modifications with, to the gates themselves. And if we modified the gates, we would have to analyze the, in terms of the spillway, what would happen with the gates. But it wouldn't require us, if we, we could, we could do something with the gates and not change the, the granite spillway itself, and still not need a spillway analysis, a safety, a stability analysis of the spillway. And that was something that was, was new, uh, from the state engineer, uh, spoke to that. Other than that, I think we spent some time talking about, uh, I think the main complexity is the, the location of how the abutment will work in the area of the Durham Book Exchange on that side.
Aye.
Um, and I, and we came out of it, you know, early on, we kind of gave GZA an indication that one of the alignments would leave the mo, you know, to have the, the abutment wall along the shoreline, furthest away from the Durham Book Exchange, would sort of open that area up to be a, uh, some kind of a pocket park, and there's been some interest in exploring that at some point, versus, say, having an abutment wall that ran down the middle of that space, that would be hard to reconcile.
Okay.
So, uh, and they're supposed to read out, I think, November is the, uh, the, they're supposed to get back to us with the preliminary analysis on that. And that was the, uh, the latest dam committee meeting. Okay, um, no other committee reports, and we move on to old business, uh, resolutions, ordinances in the second reading. Resolution twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen dash oh-six, resolution authorizing the town administrator, uh, to enter into an agreement with McDevitt Trucks to purchase a twenty seventeen Mack GU seven thirteen rolloff truck and withdraw said funds from the previously established Public Works Committee, and I will continue reading, but can tell me, somebody tell me what page that is on.
Twenty-five.
Thank you. And here we go. Whereas the current...
You've already done the reading, first reading, you only need to read it by title only.
Okay.
And now you just need a motion to approve.
Could I have a motion to approve then?
So moved.
Second.
And the Public Works Director is here to discuss it.
Good evening. So we, back in two thousand and one, we purchased a used truck from the, because we were spending about, back then, it's around thirty-five thousand a year for poles, having someone else haul our cans. And I was trying to find a used vehicle, and unfortunately, most of the used vehicles of this type of vehicle, they're like the one we're looking to trade in, um, as far as useful life.
Rick, could you explain what the trucks used for?
Yes.
What poles are?
Um, this truck is primarily utilized for, at the transfer station, hauling the open-top big thirty-yard cans. It also is, was used during spring cleanup, we don't really have that anymore, but when we have projects in some, like when we did the greenhouses and stuff, we utilize it. The wastewater has cans for their sludge that gets pressed and dropped into, and it's, it's very expensive to have someone haul those cans, they charge you by the pole. So every time they grab a can, Sean does three a month at three fifty. The transfer station does four to five a week. Um, our rate's a little less, having someone else do it, it's around two hundred right now. Um, the truck, we parked the truck a few weeks ago, so that there wouldn't be any issues with it, so that it would still have a value to, to trade in. It needs some real major, major repairs, and, uh, so we've, we've had Casella hauling our cans. We were lucky to find out that there was a truck, Mack did have a truck built already. Typically, when we get these, we order the chassis, and then we have the, the hoist put on the truck, and it takes seven to eight months. Mack also has this buyback, guaranteed buyback they provide, um, of forty thousand dollars, as long as it gets an inspection sticker on it, fifteen years, they'll buy it back. So that's a pretty good guarantee. Uh, it's something they've been doing for quite a few years now, and, um, so they had the truck built, um, they're holding the truck until tomorrow for us. If you figure in the cost to order a truck that's cheaper, as you can see, the price, the international, and just to touch on the international, they didn't have a buyback submitted with their original proposal, so I just, out of curiosity, called them to question it. And right off the bat, when he heard me ask about buyback, he goes, "Oh," he, he, he knew Mack, that I was dealing with Mack. So he submitted a new one with a buyback of this forty-two thousand, and he doesn't have a truck built, but he says he can build it in four to six weeks, which is not realistic, but that's what he's telling me. It's just, it's not realistic. So, we could have this truck tomorrow, the Mack, and save potentially fifteen thousand dollars in poles, having the cans hauled for Sean and myself. And with Sean's new plant coming online, he's going to have more cans than what he typically has now, so, that's the reason we're recommending this truck. One, it's the buyback, the guaranteed buyback, and the truck is built and sitting there, and we won't have to have the additional cost to have Casella haul our cans.
If, for whatever reason, this second bid from international is considered, this whole process has to be redone, because that is, that you, we have to only accept those bids that were at the beginning. We shouldn't go back and ask them a second time to revise their bid. So I just want to let the council be aware of that. Their, if, their option is not to accept an international bid, their only other option is either one before us, or to rebid the whole entire process, because it's not, we, we shouldn't be doing that. A bid's a bid, and that's, whatever we open is what we should, we adhere to.
So, so the, the, uh, the one fifty-six, eight thirty-four bid, that you're, oops, I'm sorry, I, I, Counsel Thompson, I'll let you go first.
Oh, that's, that's all right, go.
All right.
Finish what you can.
On the, on the, the, the Western bid, that's the one where you went back, because they didn't initially have the...
No, no, the first three you see were all done at the same time, with buybacks.
Okay.
I wasn't aware of this buyback program, it's something I was not aware of. So when I heard about it, I says, "Well, that's interesting," and I've never seen it from international, but I questioned it. As soon as I questioned it, he says, "Oh, yes, we have that, I didn't know you were interested in the buyback."
We shouldn't have questioned.
I shouldn't have. I shouldn't have.
A bid is a bid, whatever they submit is what we go by, it has to be...
We, it just wasn't asked in the original RFP?
We, we don't ask for that.
We don't ask for that.
We ask for them to submit their proposals.
We don't ask for that.
And what they submit is it.
Yeah. And, and in fact, the, there's, I'm, and I, uh... Counselor Thompson, I could ramble on here, why don't you go start?
Um, all right, the only, the only bid that I see in here is for the Mack. Should we have had copies of all the bids attached to this?
Yes.
You gotta go, you gotta...
Yes, the other bids should have been included in the packet.
Okay. Um, then looking at, at all the numbers here, um, I understand that we didn't know initially about the buyback with the international, whatever, but just going with what's here, I, the Mack, as a two thousand seventeen year, why is that better than the international? For instance, just looking at what we have here, the international is one year newer, it's two thousand more at buyback, and it's about eleven thousand less net purchase. It does say four to six weeks delivery, I hear what you're saying, as, as far as lead time, but it seems to me, if he's saying four to six weeks, and he doesn't deliver it in that time, is there something that can be said, "Look, if we need to hire Casella for ten grand, he pays for it while we wait for him to do what he said he was going to do." I, I, I'm just seeing that this whole delta, let me just finish on that.
Yeah.
I'm, 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 I'm not in on, on, on the Mack, I'll tell you, I'll tell you that. The other thing is that then, even the Western Star, um, where that is, let's call it a clean bid for lack of a better, a better term, um, the Mack, the Mack would net cost, let's say, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, including the forty thousand buyback. For one year newer truck, the Western Star is one thirty-six. If I'm going to spend eleven grand more, I'm going to get a year newer truck and not spend it on the Mack, it's just my feeling, but, um, I, I'm, I'm leaning toward the international. Now, knowing what I know about, might happen to rebid this, I, I get it, but I guess my question is, if he's saying four to six weeks, let's hold them, hold them to it.
Just the four to six weeks was the previous agreement. We don't know what the new agreement will be, I just want to, because it will be a complete rebid.
It's, it's one year newer, newer of a truck, and it's, and it's up to eleven grand difference, so...
Um, well, people are thinking about that. The other question I have, Rick, is, doesn't, isn't it, you know, unless it, for the amount of use we got, the last truck, I know it was on its, on fumes at the, at the twenty-four year point, but is it, do you think it's that likely that, that we, we are sure now that we'd want to be turning the vehicle back at fifteen years? I mean, forty thousand is better than nothing, but if it had another eight or nine years in it, at that point, then I'm not so sure that, that you're really going to want, you know, that, you know, I, I, it doesn't feel like, I think it makes sense for the town to own it, I'm not sure that it wouldn't last, last longer than, than that amount of time, and when you're looking at it, I mean, you're talking about the cost of ownership is, if you prorate that, you know, that, that, if we use the one sixty-five times fifteen years, that's like eleven thousand dollars a year. So, if we got more than four years out of it, at the, at that, at that fifteen-year point, we were better off keeping it than, than sending it back at that point.
Yeah, I wouldn't say we'd definitely get rid of it at the, at that point, but it's just an option, it's just an option.
Right, right. Well, I only kind of say that because when Counselor Thompson was talking about the total value of the bid, to me, the, the buyback number is not, I don't count that as if it's found money, I, I don't subtract it from their opening bid, because it's unclear to...
No, I was just trying to get some apples to apples, whichever way you, whichever way you do it.
Right.
The difference to me is still eleven grand for a one-year newer truck.
Uh, it is a new truck, though, it's not, I know it's a year older, but it is a brand new truck, it's just something they had.
Yeah. Counselor Cast.
I just wanted to understand a bit more about the timeframe and the costs involved for different timeframe scenarios, because you're noting that the current trucks, are you saying that it's no longer operational, it's out of service right now?
We, we're not using it to have a value there.
Okay, and there's a cost?
Oh, but it is able to be run? We don't have body decay or structural something?
We, we would have to bring it in the shop and have major repairs done...
Okay.
...to, to run that truck.
Before you could use it again.
Before we could use it.
For how much? So, there's a, so, there's a time period here, that if you wait for the Western Star or the twenty eighteen Mack, we're saying seventy-eight months delivery, that means a time period where you have to, you're going to have to pay the cost of the poles, right? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. That's correct.
So I guess one...
Waste water could be potentially more than 1150 a month per pull. And the transfer station could potentially be $1,000 a month.
And it's increasing because of some additional ones that are going to start occurring, correct?
With the wastewater. There's, and because it's a brand-new plant, they don't really know. They just know it's going to increase. They don't have a good handle on the count.
So I, I would think you generally know that it typically takes seven to eight months to get delivery because of the kind of work they have to do. Does that know ahead of time?
That's realistic. That's realistic. Seven to eight months to order a chassis and then have someone put the hoist, what we call the hoist, on the vehicle.
I don't mean to be a Monday morning quarterback, but I'm kind of just wondering if, you know, why we couldn't have planned for the seven to eight months ahead of time. But maybe that's just when the, the current truck expired. I don't know whether it was unexpected or known that it was 24 years old. So anyway, that's, that's a factor now, is the seven to eight months and the cost difference between getting the one that's available tomorrow. Do we, since we don't have the other bids, do we know why the 2017 is more than a 2018?
It, yes. It has what they call heavier springs on the front and rear. We typically order a vehicle with 44,000s and 22s on the front. This has 24s and 56s.
What are 44,000 and 22s?
It's the weight of the spring suspension system on that particular vehicle.
It's just higher capacity.
So it's rugged, a ruggeder truck.
A pros and a cons.
And that's the difference, basically, in that number. There's nothing else other than the, the suspension system.
So in terms of the first three, then we're really looking at that seven to eight month cost, carrying that cost?
Having the pulls done by some other company. That was why I went with that recommendation, because I, I know what the costs are. And that was the purpose.
Have you finished?
Yes.
Counsel Bowden?
So looking at the 2018 International, so the buyback is 42,000. Doesn't give timeframe as far as the, the buyback? In years? 15 years or?
He was matching, he was matching what MAC offered. That's a 15 year.
We shouldn't have done.
Correct.
You should not, you do not discuss bids to another contractor.
Right, we talked about that.
Counsel White?
Were you all set?
Are you still, are you still going, Kyle?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
My only question is, in, with other, you know, truck purchases or vehicle purchases, one of the items that we typically get is the, the background from Auto Excellence. And I, I know you say that a lot of repairs have to be done, but we usually get a background information saying what repairs need to be done and how much that'll cost. So do you have, do you have that information so that we can compare, kind of, because if, if it's less than $10,000, maybe it makes sense to go with the, with one of the other...
It's 16, it's 16 to 18,000 dollars.
Which will get us how much longer with the truck?
There's a lot of other issues with the truck. That was the one that would make it roadworthy again. I was hoping the co-op would sell their truck. They, they buy them every 10 years. And that's what, that's why I was waiting and waiting and waiting. And they're not getting rid of it right now, so.
The, the co-op is a group of communities that we, which we are a member of, that those who have transfer stations that are, they're full-time transfer stations unlike ours. They collect the trash for them and deliver it to waste management.
Well, I guess, I'll, I'll, looking at, looking at the finances, it's like, the difference to me in most of these, they're, they're all pretty close to coming in around 150, except for the, the initial Western Star one, which comes in after trade at 144. And the, you know, that's, that's the number is the, the main, the, the, the buyback is less, it's an option, but it's less interesting to me than the 156 versus, you know, the, the purchase price minus trade. What's the net, net? So you're looking at 144-ish for the Western Star and the other, the, the 2017 MAC that's all put together.
No, you're double, double taking it off. The number listed there is already considering...
Oh, is, is that right?
Is already including the trade, yes.
156 after trade of 12.5. Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes, well, I'm glad you pointed that out. So, so the, the 2017 MAC that you are suggesting would have been 177 prior to the trade, 178 prior to the trade. And, and, I mean, it seems to me there's, is the, is the 2018 versus 2017, does that matter much in these trucks in terms of...
No, they look, you wouldn't be able to pick it apart. They look like the same There's a lot of unknowns with those cans. They're just, they're expensive to haul, have someone else haul. That's why we went and got our own truck. And that was the reason for this recommendation, because we know what the costs are. And Sean's plant just got, turned the switch on, and there's a lot of unknowns with that. There's a year learning curve down there with that new plant. He just knows it's going to go up. He can't really give me a good number.
So, and how long would a rebid process take?
Probably would have to November. Because you have at least given a few weeks to reply to the bid. So you'll miss the second, the second meeting in September for first reading. Then, so you have the two October meetings to the first and second reading on a resolution. So November would be the timeframe to receive it.
So if, if we, if we did not take the truck that's existing and went out to rebid, then we're essentially talking about a minimum of four to five months before we would have a truck in position.
Correct. But if, if that's what the bids are, so it looks like if they don't have it on the lot to build it, it'll be, correct? Except the one that said four to five weeks.
Yeah. Realistically, it's seven, eight months. The, the, the four to six weeks is unrealistic. I'm just telling you straight up. It's...
That's what he said.
It's in the contract. He has to present it in four to six weeks.
Yeah, you had to put some penalty.
Right.
Cannot do that. Of course, he, did he put it in writing up before, or are you just telling you that's how?
No, he didn't before.
And this is not a bid?
It's really not a bid.
Right. And it shouldn't have included it.
Right. So that the, if we, I want to come to you, Counsel Thompson, there, but I guess the quandary we find ourselves, and it's too bad that it's kind of a little bit, got a little bit sloppy here in the bid process. But it's, it's, if we, if we do not, we can't, we can't accept the last bid. And if we accept the one you're suggesting, then it's, it's, you know, we're, that's the only way we get out of about a five-month delay, which means we're going to pick up another six, $7,000 in roll-off costs, is what I'm kind of hearing you say. Is that fair?
It'd be closer to 15 once that plant's produced its lunge.
Okay. So, Counselor Thompson?
I don't even know what to say at this point. Seven, eight months is $10,000. So figuring on that math, a year, 15,000 if we were to get Casella or something. 15,000 a year is what it costs us.
Right. About that?
That's 11 years of hiring them before we pay back the cost of this MAC truck. At which point, we don't have any maintenance. We don't have to take care of it. It's somebody else's problem, and we don't have to insure it. It's just a point of, just a point of view.
The only, the only caveat in there is gas prices, you know, we can't say today gas prices are the same in 11 years. That's the...
I know, but we got it, whether we pay for gas, because Casella goes up, or whether we got it, our, our gas prices to fill the dang thing aren't in here either. So, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
We do other projects, too, like the McGrath property's going to get demoed, and we're going to be doing that to save money for the town. And that would be utilized for that purpose. We do, from time to time, do projects that this is also utilized for. Though on a weekly basis.
Well, it's 16,000 or 18,000 to fix the other truck, too, for the occasional extra bits that we needed. Is that doable?
I would not recommend putting any money into that vehicle.
Okay.
Counsel Cast?
Just a point of clarification on the 2017 MAC. When does that 15 years start from? The 2017 or the time we take...
No, when, when we, we sent a contract.
And, that's it.
And I just, there were a few numbers thrown around what it currently costs us to operate the roll-off. Because I'm, and I'm, I'm a little bit, you're, I, I thought I heard that 15,000 is the current annual cost?
No, that was our estimate for if we were to have Casella come in and pull them for us and not operate ourselves.
Well, we wait for a truck to come?
For the seven or eight months, not for a year.
No.
No, if it's 10,000 for eight months, add four months, it's 15,000. So if we were to have one year without the truck, we're estimating probably about $15,000.
Okay.
Which is not budgeted. These are two different, I want to make sure everybody understands that, too. These are two different funds. This is a withdrawal from capital reserve, so we can't take the money from the capital reserve to offset the money. We'd have to find the 15,000 in transfer station.
I guess I'm seeing no more questions or comments. So I would call the roll, I guess. Counsel Finch?
Aye.
Counsel Thompson?
Nay.
Counsel Cast?
Aye.
Counsel Bowden?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-2. Okay, moving on. Resolution 2017-18-7. Purchase of a Zodiac rescue boat, whereas the current boat used by the fire and rescue department is not considered safe for operations, and whereas the town received three proposals for replacement Zodiac rescue boat with the lowest proposal from the industrial protection services for $19,550. Now therefore, be it resolved at the numero convenio. So that the town authorized the town administrator to enter into an agreement with industrial protection services to purchase a 2017 Zodiac Milpro ERB 400 rescue boat and withdraw $19,550 from the previously established fire, rescue, capital reserve fund. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, you see a discuss?
So the current boat, we inherited via through the police department, actually. It's just a small aluminum fishing boat. We, a year and a half ago, did a, had a boater safety class training, was informed that it was a huge liability to be functioning with that boat with what we do. So we put it through the CIP process to get it put in right away. It went through last year and approved through that process. And I did get three quotes. They're all within almost $20 of each other, with this one being the cheaper for the exact same boat and trailer. Obviously, with two boat ramps in Great Bay, a large portion of that being the Newmarket, we get requests all the time to go out there to find overdue kayakers or people that get stranded in the mud flats and have a medical issue and so forth. The Coast Guard can't get out there, so they'll call us.
Who were the other two bids?
It was...
They weren't included in the packet?
Defender Industry was 19894 for the exact same boat, trailer and motor. And Washington Marine was 19557. And Industrial Protection was 19550. This boat specifically made for fire departments and wouldn't be a liability.
Counselor Thompson?
Apart from, yeah, the quotes would help. The quote, the other quotes would have helped. I mean, I just, I think you know my record. I, I don't like voting at all when I don't have the information.
Yep.
And that was some of why I just voted no on the last one.
Absolutely.
Is there a grant? Was there some discussion about a grant or some kind of funding for this, for this boat at some, some point, or being able to write a grant for this or some subsidy or something? Or I could be confusing it with something else, so that...
No, not, not for the boat.
Okay. The other thing is if we use it for other, other towns or Coast Guard or whatever, is it reimbursable, like the ambulance? Do we get paid back for that? Do we bill it out over a certain number of calls? I mean, I understand we want to be a good neighbor. I do get, I do get that. But our ambulance is also a good neighbor thing, so...
Fire is different. Fires mutual aid is, it's determined that at some point in time, another community is going to provide us with a piece of equipment, and it all comes out in the wash. So there's a fire mutual aid agreement across the, really across the state, that if somebody needs something, we just, we provide it, just back up, and there's no billing for the fire equipment.
Thought it was worth elucidating. Thank you.
Counsel Bowden?
So the other two bids were, how much?
It was 19557.
What did that have for the motor?
Same exact, identical. Everything identical. Boat brand, motor brand, motor size, trailer size, apples to apples. Because this is specific for fire departments. When you see it, it's a, we can fill it up with squad airbag bottle. We could carry it across country if we needed to, if there wasn't a boat ramp to deploy it. Yes, it has a five-year warranty.
All, all free bidders?
Five years.
Actually, Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
If it's, if it's up for the council, would you be willing to table this so you guys can get the other two copies of the quotes? So you can have all the information before you?
I would, because while I like it in principle, I would be voting no tonight because I'm not seeing all the information. I'm just not comfortable being pushed. Okay. All right.
I have a couple other questions. It would be helpful to have that information also. So one of the things...
So one of the things that I asked for when we did the first reading was to get some information on how much we've used this in the past. So I'd like to, I would like to see some documentation about what the usage is and just to justify this large of a purchase. And then the other piece of it is kind of along the lines of what Counselor Thompson was asking. With other communities who are also along the water, I just wonder if, like, to me, this is the perfect example of times when we could share equipment. So we, it's not like, you know, other pieces of equipment when we might need the same piece of, you know, the same vehicle at the same time of year, you know, this is very specific, obviously, so if Stratum has a boat and there's an emergency.
Good point.
You know, like, is there some, is, is that one way to provide mutual aid that, where we don't have to buy, purchase our own boat?
I could sort of address that one, because it's, the one difference is that while there's the one emergency where you may need a boat, nine times out of ten, it's usually a missing kayak or a missing boater, that you need more, more boats, that's why it's usually one in each community versus a fleet in one town.
What?
So we each have one, because a lot of them are search and rescues, not just an individual.
Right, okay.
So do we need a vote to table?
Yes, if somebody needs to make a motion and second to table the resolution for the next meeting.
I will make a motion to table Resolution 2017-18-07, purchase of a Zodiac rescue boat, until the next meeting.
Second.
Undebatable, non-discussed. Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Bowden?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Counselor Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero to table.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to new business correspondence. Town council consider nominations, appointments and elections for the Lamprey River Management Advisory Committee, Michelle Shattuck, whose notice is for a term expiring September of 2020, for, again, for the Lamprey River Advisory Committee. I don't see anybody here to discuss it, anybody have any comments?
I'll make a motion to accept the appointment of Michelle Shattuck for the Local River Management Advisory Committee.
Second?
Not on the nomination, but on the commit, I'm sorry, different one, sorry, go, next one.
Senator looks very qualified, please call the roll.
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Bowden?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Counselor Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And for the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee, we have Jonathan Kuiper for a term that would expire in March of 2020. And I don't see any comments, but you were going to say?
We, first you make a motion, a second.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the appointment of Jonathan Kuiper to the Energy and Environment Committee.
Second?
The council needs to appoint representation to the energy. Don't, did you, I don't believe you did at the last meeting.
No, we didn't.
Just to get the council let...
So, and that is...
Separate one after.
After this one? Okay, let's, let's, a vote, please.
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Abstain.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Bowden?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Counselor Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero to one.
Okay, so is there, are there, do we appoint one person from the town council for this committee?
I gotta pull that up again.
One?
One.
And are there, is there a single volunteer or are there multiple volunteers, or has anybody decided whether they want to have that post yet?
I'm interested, but I think it would overlap too much with conservation and town council, I would assume, right?
Probably out a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess we haven't heard from Counselor Burns yet, but probably I would postpone till the next meeting to, to give some thought as to whether anybody on the council is interested in volunteering for that position.
I would, I would just say, I would also be interested in volunteering, but Counselor Finch, if you are interested, there would be some overlap, I'm not sure that that's a bad thing.
Okay.
To have overlap, personally, I think that that could be beneficial, so, I mean, I'm not, obviously, I'm interested in this committee and, because I had a role in developing the resolution, so I would certainly volunteer for it, but if somebody else wanted to, have at it.
Well, at this point, are you prepared to say whether you would or want to at this point?
Well, I, the overlap that I saw, like I said, with, with town council obligations than serving on Conservation Commission, and then we're pulling people from those two groups, so I think it might not work or be the best fit, but I would be interested certainly, but I don't think it makes sense.
You're giving the Conservation Commission two votes?
Okay, that's a good point.
Because you have two members of the Conservation Commission on there.
Mm-hmm.
So let's, let's, well, let's wait, just, just in case Counselor Burns wants to be interested.
And we still need two more at-large members, so...
Okay. So we move on to resolutions and ordinances in the first reading, so, Resolution 27-2018-08, Authorization to Withdraw Twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars from the Sewer CIP for Pumping Station Improvements, Preliminary Engineering. Do you suggest I read those just that much?
No, you can read the whole, the whole, first read the whole read.
Whereas Sewer Department has identified high, medium and low priority improvements at its sewer pumping stations, whereas the Sewer Department has been setting aside monies into its capital improvement funds to correct the high and medium, medium improvements, now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does authorize the Sewer Department to withdraw twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars from the Sewer Capital Reserve Funds so that the town engineer can perform preliminary engineering for the sewer pumping station improvements. The next one is Resolution 27-18-09, Operation of Keno Games in the Town of Newmarket. Whereas earlier this year, the New Hampshire State Legislature passed and the governor signed into law SB 191, an act establishing, establishing Keno and relative to funding for kindergarten, and whereas the legislation establishes Keno in New Hampshire as well as a program to provide grants to kindergarten students from the Education Trust Fund under RSA Chapter 198, and whereas the question of whether Keno should be allowed within the Town of Newmarket should be placed before Newmarket voters at the next municipal election consistent with the legislation, now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the question of whether to allow Keno within the Town of Newmarket shall be placed on the official ballot at the regular municipal election of March 13th, 2018, and that the wording of the question on the official ballot shall be, shall we allow the operation of Keno games within the Town of Newmarket? And that the town council shall hold a public hearing on the ballot question at its second regular, regular meeting in February 2018, which is anticipated to be February 21, 2018, which is at least fifteen days, but not more than thirty days before the municipal election on March 13th, 2018.
Bill, can I jump in with a quick clarification there, I know it's the first reading, we would be voting whether we put it on, whether it goes on the ballot or, or not?
And if it, if the council does not, then it takes a percentage, I don't remember off the top of my head, of registered voters in the community, and it will go on the ballot. And it has to be in the wording, shall we allow the operation of Keno game, games within the Town of Newmarket?
Okay, but it is up to the, it isn't like this automatically has to go on the ballot?
Nope.
We, we are required to weigh in, okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, for example, the city of Portsmouth last night voted not to put it on the ballot, but the city of Rochester and Manchester voted to put it on their ballots, because theirs is in November and not March, so...
Okay.
Resolution 20...
I have a quick question.
I'm sorry, we have a couple, Counselor Weinstein?
Just procedurally, if I, I just was curious why this is. So that last paragraph, this is the town council shall hold a public hearing on the ballot in February, so what?
State law.
Okay.
Yep, it's very clear that you have to hold a public hearing, has to be within thirty to fifteen days.
But not when we, but not at our next meeting?
No, it's within the vote, because all you're doing is placing on the ballot.
Prior to town meeting, okay, okay.
It's prior to the vote.
And that's separate from the deliberative session?
Yep.
Okay.
Just to clarify, did you say that there's a way for the citizens to put it, if we, even if we said not to put it on the ballot, if a certain percentage of them came forward with a petition?
Yep, this is not a warrant article either, so it does not come up at deliberative session, it's a separate question.
Because it's not financial.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution 2017-18-10, Authorizing the Town Administrator Enter Into a Contract With Educational Building Consultants For Doors Replace. And Opener Edition At The Sunrise Center, could be a little editing there. Whereas it has been determined that our doors have exceeded their life cycle, and whereas the Director of Facilities requested a proposal to replace the existing doors, and whereas the Director of Facilities recommends that the town enter into an agreement with educational building consultants, now therefore be it resolved that by the Newmarket Town Council that the town council authorizes the town administrator to enter into an agreement with educational building consultants to install two ingress egress doors and one powered ADA opener for nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Resolution 27-18-11, Authorizing the Town Administrator To Enter Into A Contract With Affinity Lighting For Town Street And Decorative Lighting Upgrades, Where It Has Been Determined That Our Street And Decorative Lightings Are Of Inefficient Design And Produce Higher Levels Of Greenhouse Gas, And Whereas The Director Of Facilities Requested A Proposal To Replace The Existing Lighting With LED Fixtures And Lamps, And Whereas The Town Received Two Proposals As Follows, One From Affinity Lighting For A Total Cost Of Seventy-four thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars, And Cost After Ever Source Incentives Of Forty-three thousand three hundred dollars, And The Other One From Energy Management Consultants, Or A Total Cost Of Seventy-four thousand two hundred and forty dollars, After Ever Source Incentives, Cost Is Forty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. Whereas The Town Administrator Recommends That The Town Enter Into An Agreement With Affinity Lighting Of Dover, New Hampshire, Now Therefore Be It Resolved By The Newmarket Town Council That The Town Council Authorizes The Town Administrator Enter Into An Agreement With Affinity LED Lighting To Install Lamps And Lighting Fixtures Throughout The Town For An Amount Of Seventy-four thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars, Which Is Forty-three thousand four hundred dollars After Ever Source Incentives, And Let It Further Be Resolved By The Newmarket Town Council, The Town Council Authorizes The Town Administrator To Enter Into An Agreement With The Community Development Finance Authority To Finance The Amount After The Ever Source Incentives Through Its Energy Grants Financing At A Rate Of Two Point Five Percent. This Project Will Not Go Forward Without Approval From The CDFA. And, to the next one, excuse me.
Counselor Cast has a question.
Oh, Counselor Cast?
I just wanted to note a discrepancy in the amounts.
Which?
Between, on the affinity lighting cost after ever source, the amounts in the grid and the amounts in the paragraph.
I see that one hundred dollar difference. Yeah, I think I, I, yeah, that should be forty-three, three, I apologize.
Resolution 27-18-12, Increase Of Sewer Rates. Whereas The Newmarket Town Council Has Adopted A Rate Structure Which Is Review Yearly And Audit To Assure Adequate Funds To Operate And Maintain The Systems And Fund Future Projects, And Whereas The Newmarket Town Council Has Committed To Level Yearly Sewer Rate Increases To Cover The Costs Associated With The Design, Construction And Operation Of The New Waste Water Treatment Facility, And Whereas The Sewer Department Has Entered Into An Agreement With The EPA To Design, Construct And Operate A New Waste Water Treatment Facility To Something Low Nitrogen Minutes, edit there. Now Therefore, Let It Be Resolved, The Town Council Does Hereby Approve The Following Sewer Rates To Be Effective For The November First, 2017 Quarterly Billing. Sewer Users Will Be Bill Ten Dollars Fifty Cent Per Hundred Cubic Feet Of Water Consumed, The Water And Sewer System Charge Will Have No Increase, Will Be Bill Quarterly Six Dollars For Each Water And Sewer Per Unit. Resolution 2017-18-13, Increase Of Water Rates. Whereas Water Rates Shall Be Determined By The Town Council From Time To Time In Amounts That Will Adequately Cover The Costs Of Operation, Maintenance And Repair Of Existing Infrastructure, And Also For The Reasonable Extensions To Existing Manes, In Toward Acquisition Of Future Water Supply, Plant And Equipment. Whereas The Town Council Has Not Increased Water Rates Since 2010, Whereas The Water Department Needs To Raise Additional Income To Meet Operational And Maintenance Costs, Now Therefore, Let It Be Resolved, The Town Council Does Hereby Approve The Following Water Rates To Be Effective For The November First, 2017 Quarterly Billing. Water Users Will Be Bill Four Dollars And Forty-five Cent Per Hundred Cubic Feet Of Water Consumed, The Water And Sewer System Charge Will Have No Increase, But Will Be Bill Quarterly Six Dollars For Each Water And Sewer Per Unit. Resolution 2017-18-14, Authorizing The Town Administrator Enter Into A Contract With Securadine For Visual Surveillance And Control Access System. Whereas It Has Been Determined That Our Current System Does Not Allow For Growth And Coverage, And Whereas The Director Of Facility Requested A Proposal To Replace The Current System, And Whereas The Director Of Facilities Recommends That The Town Enter Into An Agreement With Securadine For Installation And Preventative Maintenance, Now Therefore Be It Resolved By The Newmarket Town Council That The Town Council Authorizes The Town Administrator To Enter Into An Agreement With Securadine To Install A New Camera And Access System For Forty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars With An Annual Prevent, Preventive Maintenance Agreement Of Three Thousand Three Hundred Nineteen Dollars And Fifty-Six Cent Annually. That's that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Thompson?
On here that could say where the funds for this is coming from?
We caught that at five o'clock. We will be asking for amendments for the buildings and grounds, Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay. And then the PMA would come out of the operating budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any correspondence to the town council? Those in comments by town councillors. Counselor Weinstein?
I just have a quick question that I probably should have asked during the town administrator's report, and that's just about paving. When are we going to start?
We're hoping sometime later this month, beginning of October. The problem is every community in the state got the extra money, so we're all getting bumped a little bit further back because of the, the extra money, because everyone's looking for more roads.
So we can do more, but later?
Maybe later, yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I see no other lights or comments, in which case I believe we are adjourned.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn, or we can just go?
No, if there's no exception, you can adjourn, just...
Rebels. Put it in safety.
Just try it.
Yeah.
You can turn us off. Excellent.